We'll call this work session Monday, November 6th. The order, the invocation given by Ms. Tolliver and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Dahl.
May we bow our heads? Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you have in store for our city. Father, continue to keep your arms in protection around our first responders and everyone that makes up this great city. I ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing tonight, discuss the resolution to approve the one-time pay raise for city employees. Mr. Kennermer is going to go over this for us.
As y'all are all aware, a number of years ago, the legislature of the state of Alabama in its infinite wisdom decreed and passed a law which made it illegal for municipalities and government to give bonuses. So municipal attorneys and other attorneys shortly thereafter got together and said they may have forbidden bonuses, but they have not forbidden one-time pay raises. So every year at Christmas, at least for the last 31 years that I'm familiar with directly, the city of Scottsboro has passed a one-time pay raise for the city's employees. And this is the resolution before you tonight.
Anyone having questions on this? You see in your packet the amounts and all that. No questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting. All right, number two, discuss the budget amendment for the door security at the Scottsboro Senior Center. Mayor, can you go over that?
Sure. Recently, the Jackson County Council on Aging added security measures at the Council on Aging building, which is our senior center is adjacent to it. And I asked them to follow up and get estimates on doing similar thing at the Scottsboro Senior Center to help protect their seniors. And what you've got in your packet is a quote and explanation attached.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this?
I'm just, what will it involve out in the security?
Well, this will, this will put a camera and an intercom, rather, an intercom and a button at the Jackson County Council on Aging. So whoever's at the front desk there buzz in and they can open the door.
Okay.
That's what it amounts to.
That's great.
And it also adds a fire alarm release in case of fire. It automatically releases.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number three, discuss the budget amendment for the archive, social, for the social media archive. Ms. Phillips, will you go over that?
This is just an annual charge. Last year, y'all approved to, y'all approved this so that we could archive our social media accounts in case we had any kind of public records request related to that or anything like that.
You know, we discussed this during budget time, but we kind of left it off. So we're having to bring it through a meeting. So anyone else having questions, comments about that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number four, discuss updating the job descriptions for the events and marketing coordinator. Mayor, you want to go over that?
Yes, each of you have in your packet a job description for the events and marketing coordinator. As you're aware, Ms. Kirkland has moved on and taken a position with the Space and Rocket Center. And going back through, there were some things in the job description that we needed to tweak and we added additional things at the recommendation of Main Street. So it's essentially the same, but it has a few tweaks in it just to make it more accurate.
Okay. Anyone having any questions on the job description?
I do. Mr. Mayor, is there any big changes? The reason I ask that, we've had, the application process for this job has already come and gone and these people were applying under the old job scripts. Would it be enough to change somebody's mind?
No, it won't. What they were, what they applied under was a generic list of responsibilities and those have not changed.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there, I got one. Should this job description involve some kind of statement to include other, other possible jobs that may come up?
Well, number 10 on that second page there, form of other duties as assigned.
Other duties as, yeah.
Okay. Where's that?
Second page, second page is number 10.
Under the job domains.
Other duties as assigned.
Yeah, okay. I was looking for it at the end.
Okay.
One other question, would this person be bonded? The reason I say that, they need to know the ABC laws with the alcohol and purchasing and disposal of, will they need to be bonded for that?
I can't answer that. Mr. Kennermer, do you have any idea?
I have no idea. I'd have to research it.
I don't know that Ms. Kirkland was bonded either.
She was not. I don't know.
Yeah.
But you know, we're dealing in a world now where even the notary publics that the city has and all its various departments are going to have to go through a bonding process, which is going to be expensive. So that's something that if that person is going to be a notary public, they're going to have to be bonded, just like every other notary after, I think it was a month ago.
Commercial, but they could maybe get a blanket bond, possibility.
Possible.
Any other questions about the job description? No other questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Number five, discuss Avenue tax delinquencies for businesses. Mr. Wheeler, can you go over this a little bit with us? I know you, the mayor had the meeting today with Avenue. Just kind of update the council on what, where we're at.
Okay. We did have a meeting with Avenue today, the mayor, Monica and I. We discussed delinquencies. One of the things that has occurred since the time that we talked last was there has been a lien filed against that large taxpayer on their property. Avenue, they are the ones that initiates it with, you know, us asking them to, but they initiated the lien. They actually sent it to me and I walked across the courthouse and made sure that the lien had been filed properly over there. So that's done. We discussed some of the other people that were on the delinquent list. Actually, I sent last Friday my revenue officer out to a couple of the businesses here in town to tell them that they needed to actually come see me this week about the delinquency. So they said they would come in. Whether they do or not, that's a different story. But if they don't, then we need to start proceedings on them for a lien on their property We did discuss something that Montgomery does, and Mr. Kennermer and I talked a little bit about this before the meeting. One thing that Montgomery does is they, when they have a list of delinquencies, they notify the business that they have a time to meet with the council. And those businesses will come in and actually have to meet in front of the council. And then, you know, it's, you know, I don't know what you would tell them otherwise, other than, you know, you have so much time to get this paid, to free up, well, to make sure that it's paid in full. That might be something that you might want to look into. I will contact the lady that, from Avenue, actually, I've already contacted her, asking her for clarification for Mr. Kennermer to look at, to see what that we might need to do as far as if you wanted to do something like that. But still, you know, at some point in time, you're going to have to make an example of some of these people that are not paying. And there's a lot of, on the list that is no longer in business here. So, you know, it might be, my recommendation that you go ahead and start proceedings on some of those people as far as if there is any property that we can place a lien on or up to the extent of bringing a lawsuit.
Okay.
I did, you had a question for me, Mr. Kennermer. I did ask them before the meeting about filing the lawsuit. And they said that they didn't do that because it would have to be filed in our jurisdiction. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. That would be a question that you may have to answer to them.
I just know they did it before.
Yeah.
There's been one occasion where we've had something like this. It was a larger amount than we're dealing with here. But they had their lawyers up here in Jackson County Circuit Court and filed pursuant to the contract agreements, which really haven't changed.
Okay.
So I think they would be responsible for that.
I'll call and check with their attorney and make sure that they didn't, there's something there that they didn't know.
Yeah.
But Mayor, is that pretty much everything or?
It is. I think also you're going to be getting a copy of a list that you weren't getting before from Avenue that will help us monitor this a little better, I think.
You know, Avenue collects for the county commission.
Right.
And I called the administrator about whether they had a lien, this last one. He wasn't aware of it. I sent him a copy of it. Avenue is doing it for them without their knowledge of it.
Another thing that they did say is that if we filed something, then the county would also have to file the lien on, have to authorize the lien on that property too.
Yeah.
That we just couldn't do it by ourselves. They did say that if the county didn't want to do it, that they would just have to go through a process of saying, no, we're not going to do that. And then it would allow us to go ahead and file a lien.
Well, that don't make sense to me since the county did, I mean, Avenue did the one for the county already.
According to administrator, he had signed, given, they had signed, given Avenue the authority to do the lien. So they went ahead and did it.
Yeah. They did theirs without us and we're catching up. So.
And one other thing, I checked with City Decatur. And they kind of have a program set up where put a business that's not paying under a probationary period for so long to try to help relieve the delinquent sales tax that they collected. And if they don't do it within that probationary period, they cancel their license.
Did they make them come for the city council?
That I don't know.
I would think, from what little I know of Decatur's ordinances, it's probably tied into what Mr. Wheeler was talking about.
Yeah.
When they come in and make arrangements.
Mm-hmm.
And you can do a probationary kind of thing that way.
Yeah, yeah. So it would be up to us to come up with what a satisfactory probationary period was and how much, how they were making any progress paying their back taxes.
Yes, sir.
And then they would have to be current, on their current taxes.
Yes, sir.
You work with people anyway when they get behind, right?
Yes, I've tried to work with them and let them make payments. One of the things that they did say too is there's a taxpayers' bill of rights. And I asked her what length of time that it would take to go from, from the initial contact regarding the delinquency to when that we could file a lien. And it's about.
We've already got the lien. When we could attach for a judgment, is what I think you're trying to say.
It's, but it's only, it's like six months.
That's a long.
So it's not something that, you know, you can do in two weeks or four weeks or there's notices that has to be sent to the taxpayer, then they have time to come back and talk to them and then.
I assume Avenue, as soon as the person is delinquent in that quarter, they send a notice to them saying that they're delinquent and they owe X amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, well, I think they don't go more than maybe a couple of months. I don't think it would be a quarterly thing. I think it's, they notify them that they were delinquent in a month, you know, after a month.
After a month.
Because a lot of times you'll have people that will pay maybe on the 21st or 22nd.
Right, month.
And it would show up as them being delinquent, but they're not really delinquent because they came.
They're just late.
They're just late.
They're just late, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, maybe it was postmarked the 19th and.
Yeah.
They didn't get the check till the 22nd or 23rd or something like that.
Right.
But they're collecting the taxes.
Yes.
Well, that's what we've talked about. The whole side of this is, we're skipping, is the criminal side. And the process of what's it going to take to do something on the criminal side? Yes, Avenue's going to keep trying to get money, but if they don't, then what?
And there was some on there that was five, six, eight years old on there that they're still trying to collect.
But if we've gotten that far, it should already be in court, in the court system.
These are some that were already, that have been closed.
Their business is closed.
For several years, the businesses have closed, but they continue to try to collect.
Yeah.
How long do we let a current business owner that refuses to pay their taxes, how long do we let it go on? We lose every month. That's something we all need to consider, I believe, you know?
I believe she said that this ordinance that they had in Montgomery or policies that they had in Montgomery, they allowed them like six months. And if they didn't get everything paid back in six months, then they would close their business down. But she also said that out of that, to her knowledge, there was only one business that had been closed in the years that she's been doing it.
If you close a business down, what is the procedure, Mr. Kennermer?
You have to have an ordinance or a policy in place to do it. I've asked Mr. Wheeler to get the information from Avenue as to what authority Montgomery is using.
Yeah.
And they're using down there. I want to see if it applies to category seven cities as opposed to category three cities.
Yeah.
Things of that nature.
How many big ones do we have, approximately?
That are open.
What do you call big?
I don't know, I mean.
Well, people that collect tax.
People that are collecting taxes and haven't paid in a long time. They're taking people's money, but they're not giving, paying the taxes.
Are you talking a thousand dollars? You talking 5,000?
Let's say 5,000. Is that, I mean, I'm just.
I'm going to say there's probably maybe 15.
So it's not really fair to the places that are paying taxes.
That's right. It's not fair.
Well, what's happened in the last five years.
About 15, about 15 that's over 5,000.
I can give you a better number. I've got something in my office that I can give you a better number on it tomorrow.
We can only go back and try to collect old debt, but we can try in the future to not let it get beat.
Yeah.
Right.
But I was running a business and I'm 20 grand behind, okay? You come talk to me and I just shut my doors and you say, well, we're closed now. Well, that 20 grand's still there. It's still a criminal charge. Just because I closed my business, I'm still around, you know?
It's stealing.
Yeah. If you have property, then that's at the time.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think it's just the ones that are still open. We need to look at the ones that are closed too.
There was one on this list that she said today that, that we have a lien filed on them and they are wanting to sell part of their property. And they can't sell that property because there's a lien on it from the city of Scottsboro.
If I'm not mistaken, then that same group has sued us and Avenue and Montgomery Circuit Court. It's, I think, a frivolous lawsuit, but.
So, Mr. Kennermer, is there a criminal element to this side?
I think there definitely is a criminal element. If I give you a dollar and 10 cents and part of that money is supposed to go here and part of that money is supposed to go there for schools and children, for the cities, for the county, for the state. And I receive that money and I'm holding it as an agent, as a business under the law. I'm required to pay that to the state. I'm required to pay that to the city. I've taken, or that business has taken my money that is supposed to go to those children and to build roads and has withheld it. That's theft, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
To bring a criminal charge requires a complaint, but ultimately requires the district attorney to decide he's going to bring that kind of thing before a grand jury. I think if one continuously, openly, notoriously, and actually does such a thing, I think that gives the district attorney ground, certainly, if they wish to present it to the grand jury and see if an indictment is appropriate.
If you have some of these past individuals that are no longer in business that owe us money and they have gone on to have another job somewhere, can their wages be garnished?
Under the taxpayers' bill of rights that Mr. Wheeler was talking about earlier, the cities have the authority to seize tax refunds and things like that. So yes, we could, under certain circumstances, go that route. I don't know that the city has done much of that, but that's a route we could go to with some of them in the future. With at least one of them, I expect they've left the country and gone back home and will never see anything again. The, the big one that's in Montgomery, Circuit Court, who knows what's going to happen there? But I ultimately will get a judgment. I suspect that we'll then get a bankruptcy document.
Yeah.
You know, JCPenney's is still on the list for a couple of $3,000, I believe, in it, Ms. Wheeler. They're in bankruptcy. You know, there's several businesses that haven't been in business for 20-something years on the list, just.
Does bankruptcy release them from their liability?
That's up to the bankruptcy judge, but usually.
So doesn't Avenue get a percentage of what they collect? That's how they get paid?
No.
We pay them.
We pay them on contract.
The only thing that you might be talking about there is business license. There is a provision in their business license.
But we hire them, right?
Yeah, yeah. We hire them. If they discover businesses that, for some reason, we don't have them as a licensee in the city, I think that they get maybe 40% of that business license. You know, if it's, if it's $500, they get $200 of it. But, but then they furnish us with a list of those businesses that, that they collect and we put them into our system so the following year, a card would be generated for them, noticed, for them to pay their business license. So they only collect it one year.
Well, I think we need to get a policy in place for the future because if there's some of them on that list, I know will go bankrupt to keep from paying. And, you know, we may be wasting our time.
I suspect, with your permission, Mr. Kennermer.
Yes, sir.
That as soon as we get those policies and procedures out of Montgomery, that we review them, bring them before the council, see if the council wants to adopt something similar. And then I would recommend we bring Avenue up and summons the top 10 delinquents to come before the council and the people.
That would be a good start.
I was going to suggest, once you got that from Montgomery, we put together a committee and look over those and try to come up with a plan to move forward. But yes, I would love to have, look at the top 10 or maybe even more if we have to, once we see the list, yeah.
Start off with the top 10 and go from there.
And maybe that ends up being a quarterly thing until you get caught up. You have to kind of.
Or maybe it needs to be quarterly all the time, see where we're at.
Yeah.
Before it gets bad.
Yes.
One of the things that I suggested several years ago to the council, you may remember this, Mr. Kennermer, but the legal municipalities, they perform a service where you file the paperwork for people that owes you. If it's a, I'm not sure that you can do corporations, but if it's a.
Individual.
An individual that files income tax, that you can file this paperwork with the legal municipalities. And they will take that, they will notify the taxpayer or whoever owes you that, that bill. They notify them and then if they do not take care of that, then they will file paperwork that will allow the State Department of Revenue, or Department of Revenue, to withhold income tax refunds. And, and that's a way of paying that money back to you. So if y'all want to pursue something like that, then I can get more information from the legal municipalities as to how to do that.
Without a doubt, yes.
If someone's operating under an LLC, can they still personally be held responsible with a lien?
Depends.
Mr. Kennermer, do you remember whether you could do that with corporations or not?
I don't know that you can do it with corporations, but I know you can do it with individuals.
It just seems to me that corporations, they would not be actually paying in income tax through personal returns, so.
Right. And I know you can do it with individuals.
Yeah.
And another thing we may want to do with those people that do business with the city in an LLC, have the owner of the LLC do a personal guarantee on our form where they're applying for their business license, where they stand surety for their LLC's taxes. And if they don't want to sign it, they don't get a business license. Just an idea.
And not only, not only can you do it through, would be able to do it through the sales tax, but also any individual that owed us garbage service would be the same thing, same way. If we had somebody that, that owes us for garbage service, I'm talking about the billing that Stacy does, not the billing that goes through the water, sewer and gas.
Okay.
Okay. That's a lot of information. Thank you. Anyone else having questions and comments? So at this point, we're waiting on the information from Montgomery. Once we get that information, we'll look at forward, doing a committee and seeing if those rules will work here. If not, we'll move forward with rules that will work here.
And possibly I would have it by the next work session, so I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. So we, that'll conclude the meeting. There's no delegations tonight, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
The only thing I've got tonight is we've had questions about our demolition project, the grant we got for the demo. And it goes to bid Thursday, November 9th at 2:00. So once that's bid, we'll be ready to get started.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
And Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Ashburn?
I'd like to thank Whitney for getting us this new flooring up here and the new chairs. They pulled one on me before, they put my old chair in and I sat down in it and I said, ain't these chairs fine? But thank you, Whitney. That's all I have.
Ms. Frederick?
Well, I want to congratulate Jared and his team at the library. They had a great event, an author event Saturday. Can you say a little bit about it, Jared?
This was our first North Alabama author expo. We had 24 authors from about within 100 miles come by. A couple of hundred people come through. It was excellent. Some other talents do. Some other talents do this, and it grows and it grows, and we're glad to be starting here. Appreciate everybody coming here.
That's a good number for a first time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. I don't have anything tonight. I appreciate everyone coming. To remind everybody, November thirteenth, next Monday, we'll have a meeting. November twentieth, work session, November twenty-seventh, meeting. And that'll conclude the meetings for November.
Do we have a day off for Veterans Day this week? I can't remember if it was on the schedule at all.
You're, you're off already. You're retired.
That's beside the point.
It is Friday.
It's Friday.
Well, the Veterans Day is actually on Saturday. Like, your government agencies, like the post office, will be closed on Saturday.
Okay.
So, but most people celebrate it on Friday, and I assume the city celebrates on Friday.
The Red Farm is closed Friday.
Okay. But you'll be open Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll be open Saturday, too, right?
All right. With that being said, I appreciate everyone coming. We're adjourned.